For the twenty sixth of February twenty twenty four. Uh, we have. It's starting now at five thirty, thank you. Devonport City Council acknowledges and pays respects to the paddle-wafer packer people as the traditional and original owners of Lutra Weta and continually custodians of this land on which we gather. We also acknowledge and pay our respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal elders past and present. All persons in attendance are advised that it is council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minute on a period of six months. The meeting will also be livestreamed on council's YouTube channel. Uh, so we don't have any apologies tonight, we have a full house, very nice to see all the councillors here, thank you very much. Uh, any declarations of interest? Or quiet on the home front, thank you very much. So moving on to item three, the procedural section, three point one, confirmation of the recommendations there, if I can have a move please.
So moved.
And then councillor Murphy, and sorry, second was councillor, uh, councillor Murphy.
Me and the procedural man.
Thank you, councillor Martin.
Nothing to add, thank you.
Any further comment from the table? No councillor Murphy, deposed place. Thank you, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Caribbean and the sort, thank you. Uh, item three point two is the public question time, three point two point one. Looking to that, his responses to questions raised at primary meetings, again the recommendations there, if I can have a move please.
I heard.
Councillor Hollister, thank you. And second was councillor Ennis, councillor Hollister.
Nothing to add, it's all in the report.
Thank you councillor Ennis.
Same.
Thank you, any further comment? Councillor Martin.
Uh, he should do, ma'am, thank you, uh, it's just, uh, noteworthy that, um, our council took the responsibility to answer, um, Shane Cook-Allison's questions on notice, considering he's not a rate fighter in Devonport, but it was good to see that he had some interest with respect to what's happening in our greater region. And the responses were appropriate.
Thank you councillor Murphy, any further comment? No councillor Hollister, deposed place.
Deposed place.
Thank you, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Caribbean and the sort, thank you, three point two point two is questions on notice from the public, uh, there were none, three point two point three is questions without notice from the public. If we have anybody in our gallery today who would like to come up and ask any questions, this is your time. Seems to be no one putting their hand up, thank you very much. So we'll move on to, uh, three point three, questions on notice from the councillors, no, we don't have any. Three point four is notices of motions. So we're up to item three point four point one, notice of motion for surface shelter at Aikenhead Point. The mover would be councillor Martin?
Yes, so moved, thank you ma'am.
Thank you, and a second of place.
So second.
Thank you councillor Moore, councillor Martin, you have the floor.
Thank you very much ma'am, and I hope that all councillors have had a chance to read over uh, some of the attachments that I've put up with my motion, um, so as written, it's that council investigates options in relation to construction of a surfers' shelter in proximity and being able to view the river break at Aikenhead Point and consider funding as part of the twenty four, twenty five budget deliberations. Um, this idea is not my own, I'm not taking credit for it, it was something that I I read about prior to coming on to council, I thought, um, that's a really good idea. Um, and then when I was elected and asked the officers like what was happening with that project that I read about, um, I was met with, uh, we don't really know about it, um, so I did a bit of digging and talked to, uh, John Vanderwood, who's mentioned in the article, and basically they had this great idea, but they didn't have legs and didn't go anywhere. And I think the reason for that was simply because nobody was giving it a little push. Um, so my motion hopefully to be considered isn't to say that this is what we will do, um, but more let's just have a look at it, because I think it does have some merit. Um, talking to John and, uh, the surf riders group, I think it's something that would get used. Um, what I had found was that they do only have a a select number of surfable, uh, days at that river break, and generally the weather isn't very nice at those times. Um, John mentioned something as simple as a, a break wall would be an asset to have in that space. Uh, I'm not saying that's what it should be or not, it was just what, um, what, uh, surfers would, um, think was appropriate. Um, in my motion I have mentioned, uh, I think it could be considered as a part of the public art um, policy and go through the public art, public art committee as well, um. Again, I've probably got more ideas of what it's not going to be than what it would be. Um, it's not going to be a, a four-wall, um, with a roof, change room and toilets. It's going to be a very simple aesthetically pleasing shelter, just to get, um, those surfers out of the elements so that they can, uh, sit comfortably and get changed and potentially watch the others. Um, I think, living in Devonport and growing up here, it's one thing I actually love is when that river break is pumping and you go past there and, and watch the guys like, I should have had full disclosure, I'm not a surfer and I've never tried to surf that river break, but it really is something quite unique for our city to, to see those. Those people go out there and get amongst it, um, and it's got a great history and, um, should be celebrated. So I hope that, uh, that can be considered by the other councillors, thank you.
Thank you councillor Martin, councillor Moore.
Uh, yeah, thanks councillor Levini, happy to support this, knowing that it's a consideration for the budget. Obviously, if this was going to be a huge expenditure, expenditure, then we probably wouldn't look at it, but let's get some options on the table and have a look at what we're actually talking about in terms of costs and in terms of what it would look like and what purpose it would serve.
Further comment from the table, councillor Murray?
Uh, thank you ma'am ma'am, um, I was probably going to suggest a, um, defer the motion to a workshop for that consideration and conversation. Um, I think with a notice of motion, it does put us council in a binding position to progress to a particular stage as the motion is written. Um, whereas if we had a workshop, we can get, because the motion itself and the information that's contained in it, um, having done a bit of research around other surf breaks around the country, um, and Bell's Beach being one, especially when it mentions with respect to competitions. It was interesting, um, having looked at the images of, of how they actually ran that event, a lot of that infrastructure was bought in specifically for that, that competition. And I, I can't see why that, that's never happened in the past where they actually haven't gone down that stage where there would need to be a significant council investment, because this I don't think we can treat with, um, by any means, by the imagination, um, because it's council, they're expensive. Um, but I'd be more than willing to have the conversation around the workshop if we move them, second, we're happy to defer it to a workshop. At least give us a little bit more of an opportunity before we actually commit to a reservation of council to actually go down a path where we'll actually investigate, including this in the twenty four, twenty five budget submissions.
So just, um, clear councillor, you don't think that considering it, you think that's too strong?
Correct.
It's not saying.
It, it'd be really good to have the, the board riders, guys and John Vanderwood actually come along to a workshop and actually have a conversation with the councillors around and, and provide us the opportunity to ask more questions. Um, so we can get an understanding of what they actually need, because as I said, notice of motion itself mentioned a number of different things, change rooms, um, yeah, the notice of motion mentioned change rooms in the letter, in the
The letter, yep.
Yeah, in the attachment that came with the notice of motion, um, that mentioned change rooms and, you know, we've got toilet facilities down there at the moment, we've got the Vietnam Vet Shelter down there as well. So it's just getting an understanding of location, what do they actually want, what do they actually need, what do they envisage that they actually? What, or is it, or is it just a, um, or is it just a bus shelter?
Not even, not a bus shelter, won't, won't be a bus shelter.
Yeah, and then, then, then we've got to, it allows us to provide the opportunity for council offices to go away, because again.
I would just ask, like, is it a procedural motion or are you just asking them to change the wording?
Yeah, a procedural motion ma'am.
The workshop.
Yep, to go, to defer the motion to a workshop, so I should have stated that from the beginning.
But my expectation is that the council offices would do that. Excuse me, it's really bad ma'am ma'am, so if there's a, um,
At my right.
Sorry, if it's a procedural motion, there's no further debate, so you must call for a second round and, um, decide whether you accept the motion or not.
Therefore?
Yeah, so I'd like to move procedural motion ma'am to have this notice of motion deferred to a workshop.
So I need a second of, councillor Murray, this question is.
Second.
That's next, thank you, councillor Murray. Oh, it's not, oh, sorry, I've got to say, I don't like it. Thank you. So therefore we need to just put this to a vote without debate. So we have councillor Murphy moving for it to go to a workshop, councillor Ennis has seconded. So I would like to ask therefore, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against?
No.
I'll take a sharp hands place, so therefore councillor Murphy, councillor Ennis, councillor Martin, and against, oh, sorry, sorry. Let's start again, this is to full on councillor Murphy's procedural motion, a sharp hands place. Councillor Murphy, councillor Ennis, councillor Martin and councillor Shane. And against councillor Wilczynski, councillor Hollister, councillor Levini, councillor, councillor John. Lost, thank you, so we go back to the debate. And now we are asking for more comments from the table, because we've already had councillor Levini and councillor Moore speak to us. Any further comments please?
Yep.
Yes, Shane.
Thanks ma'am, um, there's a couple of things I really like about the motion, and then, thank you very much for bringing up councillor Martin. Um, I like the fact that it's community-led, and I think you very elegantly responded to, um, the stakeholders' requirements in your notice of motion, um. I don't know if it was your idea to incorporate other things like public art and local history, but I think that, that really ties in well. Um, the small usage numbers is not really a concern to me, I think occasionally with projects like this, it's not really the usage, but it's also, um, you know, is it an iconic attraction that taps into our waterways, and they obviously, that, that's a big thing. Um, I have one question, which is, um, probably not for you, but more probably through you ma'am or the general manager. Um, the officers' comments note that there would be possible concept designs. Um, I have a concern that if we do do concept designs, they might just stay in the, the shelf like the ocean pool. Would you give a guarantee that if we go to all this expense of doing designs, that they would be a valid public comment? Sorry.
That's fine. I think I know the answer.
Yes, that's true, I think that in council's, that council's discretion.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Hollister.
This is actually asking for, to investigate the options. Eventually it'll come to council workshop ability, once it's been investigated. Um, and then council will decide one way or another, whether it's going to go ahead or not, so I don't have any problem with the motion.
Thank you, further comment, councillor Ennis?
Thank you, I, um, I really like the idea of, um, celebrating part of our history and, uh, I, like you councillor Levini, uh, love going down there on days when it's windy and wild and sitting and watching, uh, surfers and had done for a fair while now, uh, so just celebrating the history of, um, and, and having something around our city and becomes a nice point of interest for people who are visitors to our city and uh, that are like, who, uh, will walk our porch or will go on a little tourist train along there and get off at that spot. And, uh, yeah, it becomes a part of public interest and, uh, quite like the idea, so, uh, that bit really, um, tells a point, thank you.
Thank you, further comment? Councillor Murray, did you have a question?
Uh, no ma'am, I, I just want to, uh, speak to the motion, uh, with respect to, I, I support what councillor Levini's looking to do, but, um, I, I won't be able to support the motion as it's written, um, and the simple fact being, um, the motion actually stipulates that it's, um, we investigate options in relation to the construction of a surface shelter in proximity. We don't have any detail around what's needed, and that's the reason why I asked for it to be moved to a, deferred to a, a workshop, so we can at least engage with the users with respect to, we had, council had a fairly clear understanding of, um, of what they actually want, so therefore we can make an informed decision, uh, before we go, or else, what are the instructions to the council offices? You know, what, what are they going to investigate? We haven't got any detail, we haven't got any information from the actual user group, and they haven't had that opportunity to speak to all of us with respect to what they envisage and what they would like. I think we just need to be very careful about, because the, as I said, uh, previously, the, the motion is very clear that it states investigates options in relation to the construction of a surfers' shelter. Um, you know, this is the, what we're instructing council officers to do. Um, uh, proximity, being able to view the river break at Aikenhead Point and consider funding as part of the twenty four, twenty five budget deliberations. Um, I think we need to be very careful about what we're actually committing to, without having that opportunity to engage with the user group um, with respect to what do they actually want, because I, I think, I think it's a great, great idea, don't get me wrong. Um, and the fact that we can actually do something, I think it's fantastic. Many a times I've taken my kids down there when the surf is pumping and it is pretty cool. Um, many a times I've taken my nephew or my brother-in-law down there, who ride that surf break when it is pumping. Um, but as I said, in the, in the information that was provided, there's a number of questions that I had, especially when they were talking about having fires down there on the foreshore. Um, I think we need to get an understanding of, of what they're actually wanting to achieve, uh, with burning and driftwood, because I'm not too sure whether that's permitted, which I'm looking at, um, Miss Luncin over there, and she's shaking her head, so we need to have this conversation if we're going to engage with the community. Let's engage with user group, so then we can actually provide instruction for the council to actually go away and come up with some fairly considered concepts with respect to, well, is it, this is what they sort of convey to us, this is what we'd like to see down there on the foreshore. There's a lot of moving parts, but once we, once we support the notice of motion, which I support in its intent, however, I just think that it's very restrictive with respect to, because there is no detail. There is no detail in the notice of motion of what they're actually sort of wanting to construct, or how, or what that's going to look like, and we haven't had that conversation, so. I think as councillor, um, deputy mayor Shane pointed out, it's good that we're engaging with the community, that's fantastic. Let's provide them the opportunity to actually come and sit down with all of us and have a conversation around what they actually want. So I just, I'm, I'm being a little bit pragmatic, I suppose, but that's who I am, um, and I, I will not be supporting the motion purely based on that, unfortunately. Even though I support what the, the concept, I just think there's another step that we probably need to have before we commit to a, a resolution of council to instruct council officers to go down a path that's a rabbit war, because we don't know what it is actually they want.
Thanks councillor Levini, uh, councillor Wilczynski.
Um, I would like to say that's great, giving a voice, excuse me, to a small group that doesn't probably normally come to a formal workshop or a setting. And it's good that you've taken it up, I, I back you with that, because the consideration focus and the fact that we know as councillors, our budget consideration is about to start, so who is it to say that this river rats aren't going to put a, a nomination in as well for consideration? You've stepped it through, consideration means that we look at what might be a possibility, and I think that might lead to a workshop, so I think you've done the right thing, you've brought it forward. Um, so I agree with what you've done, and the detail can be worked out as we go.
Thank you, councillor Martin, do you have any more, I'm sorry, I can't say.
I have.
Thank you.
All right.
It's all right, it's just.
Uh, thank you very much for the motion councillor Levini, um, I too have not a surfer, and that's true, I would attempt as a young person, as a river rat, for five minutes and ended up in reservations in hospital at one stage. So I'm well aware of it out there, possibly a shelter would have been good to be able to get the ambulance out there and take him up in the shelter, but, uh, no, that wasn't possible. Uh, with the motion itself, it's a bit, uh, ambiguous in regards to detail, as councillor Murphy has, has pointed out. And when you were saying, oh, look, it's not going to be a, a shelter with four walls and a, and a roof, well, that's not what the motion's sort of saying, oh, they're saying options. When you say it might be a, a wall with a bit of art on it, there's, there's a bit, uh, ambiguity in it, and it's a bit open. So I wonder if you consider, uh, a bit of rewording that the council investigates op, options in relation to the possibility of constructing a surface shelter. So the possibility of it, which might soften it a little bit, uh, for that, and in the end, and consider possible funding as part of the two thousand, twenty four, twenty five budget deliberations.
Yep.
Uh, would that be acceptable to the mover and seconder?
Fine, absolutely. So we'll just make sure that we get that correct, so councillor Martin.
So, uh, the possibility of constructing a surfers' shelter in relation to the possibility of constructing a surface shelter.
So you're having that wording?
Well, yes, I mean, uh, it hasn't come up.
Councillor Levini and councillor Moore are happy with that?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Just make sure that the wording is correct up there now, in relation to the possibility of constructing, uh, possibly of construction on the work. Yep, so we may be able to run it out and consider closing as a possibility, yes.
Thank you, and vice, mover and seconder are happy?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I think it's a great idea, um, and, uh, it has a limited amount of, um, surfing days out there, and it is a small band, but for years we've seen people surf that river and, uh, I've seen when the ships had come in, Able Tasman and possibly the Princess at one stage, when they were surfing out there. Uh, so we're, we're sort of known for that, and it's unique in itself, so I think it's part of Devonport's history. Thank you.
Thank you, further comment?
Question ma'am?
Councillor Murphy, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question just through to the general manager. Um, general manager, is the land on the breakwater side of Aikenhead Point council land? Or is that the responsibility of Crown Test Ports?
So through you ma'am, the land around the twelve blocks of Crown under the base of council in the section where there's an high-hand point is actually Tas Ports.
Thank you.
So second question, second question ma'am, with that through the general manager, would that then be, uh, a, a question for, or a, an adaptation to Tas Ports or any construction in that space?
Yeah, correct, through you ma'am, so depending on location, we could potentially sit in either of those areas. What I should mention is also the, um, the watermark or so, um, is outside council's least areas, depending on how close it is to the river. So all those seem to maybe help that as part of the possibility of the options.
Thank you. Uh, no further comment from the table, any further, councillor Levini? Please move to the debate.
Thank you ma'am, and thanks to my fellow councillors for engaging debate, I appreciated the thought that everyone's put into it. Um, I was, uh, fairly careful with the wording of the motion, that it wasn't locking council into constructing anything. The words that I chose, I actually looked at previous motions that were similar, um, similar sentiments, similar, similar timeframe, just to be considered and investigated and then, um, as a potential project that might be, um, possible for this, uh, current budget deliberations. Um, so yeah, I, I'll admit the, the attached letter from, um, the North West Riders Group might have been a bit misleading in what, uh, their vision of a shelter might be, um, and I'll agree with councillor Martin that it was a bit vague. And that is just to reiterate that this motion isn't spelling out what it should be. And that is just to reiterate that this motion isn't spelling out what it should be. This is leading it up to the possibility of what it could be. Um, and that's part of the reason it was open. I, I don't want to say this is, this is the motion, this is what council should build. It's just maybe this is something we can consider for the next, um, financial budget. Um, and that's, have I got that on that? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you councillor Devaney. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Sharp hands please, so all those for the motion, please raise your hands. Thank you councillor Ennis, councillor Wilczynski, councillor Martin, councillor Holster, councillor Devaney, councillor Moore, councillor Shane, councillor Jarman. And against councillor Murphy. So moved, thank you. So we are on to item three point four point two. The notice of motion is to request legislation to include the holding working of the vulnerable people card in the eligibility criteria for nominating as a councillor. Councillor Murphy, on the standing floor.
I'll move the motion, ma'am.
Thank you, and a secondary.
Second.
Councillor Martin, thank you. Councillor Devaney.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Um, obviously this is more a timing thing, um, than, than any else. It is a, an important issue for our Tasmanian community. Um, and I think with, uh, pending legislative change with respect to different sectors within Tasmania, I think it's only relevant. Um, that, um, local government falls in line pretty much. Um. Definitely issues, yeah, that's fine. Um, obviously the notice of motion is for the local city council to take this to the, the next, the, the local government association, the general meeting. Uh, it has been put up previously, but I think, uh, the Tasmanian community's expectation of their elected members, um, is now changed, changing. Um, so, uh, I would commend the motion for my fellow councillors to support in this recommendation from us.
Thank you. Councillor Martin, sorry.
Hello. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, look, I fully agree with this, uh, motion. Uh, it is a time where local government should be leading in this space. And we had that opportunity to lead in this space previously, when we could have adopted such in our policy, previous motions. Uh, and I would suggest that this council also consider that it puts in our current policy to lead prior to go into, uh, this legat. Motion that's going to be put up later on the year. Because if we don't, uh, we're not putting our money where our mouth is. And that's what I suggested last time we had a discussion on this, that Devonport City Council was leading in this space, uh, with a motion that was, uh, put up. And I think councillor Murphy has done the right thing, put it right smack dead in front of everybody. So I fully support the concept, but I also, uh, support that the Devonport City Council should have it in its policy. That our councillors lead from the front and have worked with all the people's card themselves. Mandatory, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the table? Councillor Holster.
So now this has come to look at on previous conferences and not got through. Um, I'm going to support the motion. I've had a working vulnerable people card for over twenty years in working capacity and also as a volunteer, so I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you. Councillor Devaney.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, as someone new to council and even went nominating, I was actually surprised at how little qualifications you need to run as a councillor. Exhibit A, sitting right here. I, I have my, uh, vulnerable, um, people, uh, working vulnerable people card as well. And think it should, should be something that is required by a, a city member of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Sorry, I can't see the, this is a long. That's right, councillor.
Um, look, anyone who's done parent help, um, would know that, uh, you need one of these little cards. Procedural common sense, support the motion.
Thank you. Further comment? Councillor Wilczynski.
Yeah, I just want to follow on and agree with everyone prior to that. It's just a normal step that should be done. Yep.
Thank you.
My support.
Thank you.
Um, if I may, uh, yes, certainly we've had this motion before at Devonport council level, but we took it to Legat. And there was, I believe, three councils on the same page at the time, all had the same similar notion. And it was put to twenty nine councils and it didn't get up. And I was sitting next to a, uh, member of Parland at the time. And I said under my breath, what have they all got to hide? He said, tell them that. And I stood up and said, what have you all got to hide? Because it just isn't right. We are leaders in a community where we're elected into this very responsible role. And we can be invited to where the most vulnerable people could be, whether it's a school, um, a guide hall being opened. We go to the opening rebuttal here. And the, the whole point is we should, we should have followed certain criteria to be allowed to have this role. And this is one of the no brainers, I think, I really, I'm, um, the followed truth of councillor Devaney for putting this up, I really appreciate. Because it, it just doesn't make sense in this day and age. We've just had a report, um, put out by the local government on, um, things that are going on with child abuse. And it has been looked at very seriously, how we even just run events. Uh, how we allow people to hire our venues. We have strict procedures that we're looking into and we don't have a working vulnerable card criteria to run as a councillor. It's just crazy. So I certainly, certainly believe in this and I think it's high tide that the twenty nine councils should vote, every single one of them should vote for this. And it gets to the legat conference. So thank you. Uh, I'll ask councillor Murphy to close.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Yes, I, I, I've been there and I've witnessed, uh, when you actually stood up and did that. And you have been a champion of this particular issue for some period of time. But I also agree with councillor Martin, it is high time, high time. And the fact that the community expectations are at that level, um, that it should be a requirement, hence the reason for the notice of motion. But, um, I'll put it to the vote.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously, and thank you, every single one of you. We move on to item four, planning authority measures, which we have none tonight, amazingly. Uh, item five is reports. We're moving to five point one, which is a tender report for a spray and connected design and construct breach. The recommendation is bear from the tenders. If I could have a move of the voters.
I move.
Second.
Councillor Holster and councillor Murphy, thank you. Councillor Holster to speak.
This is a talk to the recommendations for the next section of this area around Spraken. Which is a couple of true causes of, uh, walking paths around there. Um, new bridge over the figure of Oak Creek, just beyond the Big Apple's. Fantastic. And good to see the rest of this joined up. So I support the recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Uh, yes, ma'am, actually seen yesterday, started work up there on, uh, off Devonport Road this morning. So fantastic and, uh, really looking forward to the opportunity to ride it.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councillor Ennis.
Uh, yeah, I was just wondering if, does this include signage? Does the tender include signage? Because it's very important.
It is always very important, thank you. Since we've got an answer from down the, Mr. Bell, change.
Yeah, through you, ma'am. Um, this tender does include signage, not, not for the overall path. I have reached out to, um, Crown Council Authority and they're looking at signage at the moment and we're also working with them. So, um, this is purely just a bridge tender, but yeah, we are working to make ground signage.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Shane?
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Um, through you, I thank the general manager for answering a couple of questions regarding the tenders, um, today. That was appreciated. Just a quick one, um, the contingency is quite a lot for the bridge project. Is there any particular reason why it's roughed out in the half? Um, what's the issue that, that, that? Mr. Bell, change again.
Through you, ma'am. Um, the contingency is just the balance. Um, so at the moment we have a tender out on stage three construction, which has started near Devonport Road. Uh, the bridge tender, which will set through this, and we have an estimate, an estimated amount for stage four. We're working through detailed design at the moment. What we don't know is, is what's under the ground there and what some of those obstacles will be. So this is purely just the, uh, the construction contingency is the remaining amount over and above the sort of the standard rates we've got from that stage three construction. So we're just working through that detail at the moment.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Councillor Devaney.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, this is great. I love this project and, and how this is going to transform that, that little pocket of Koyba, the further beautification of Koyba. Uh, it's a growth place, close to, close to schools, close to sporting, rent, close to the wharf there for fishing. It's a fantastic spot to live.
Thank you. Councillor Holster, did you have a question as well?
No.
It's fine. Any further comments from the table? Uh, we'll have councillor Holster to close. We'll be lighting on now.
Actually, it's interesting that the regatta's actually out in this area. It's very shortly and, um, I presume that southern part of Port St. Creek will be one of the viewing areas. So I think, you know, there's a bit further enhancement for those regattas if they keep going in this area in the future. Um, I think totally, I think it's a good management and a good development.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Move. You know, thank you. So item five point two is a tender report again for the conflict of the planning of council facilities. Again, the recommendation is there, might have the mover close.
So move.
Councillor Murphy, other secondary?
Second.
Councillor Moore, thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Um, the tender committee obviously has done its due diligence with respect to the requirements of the, uh, compliant tenders. It is noteworthy that, uh, one of the tenders was a significant difference compared to three of them. So that's business. Um, it's something we need and we should support the recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Moore.
Yes, I'm happy to support this recommendation. It is noteworthy that it is a forty six percent increase from the last contract. But I'm pretty sure, um, the explanation of just market prices as well as the increase of frequency and services to some parts of our council facilities, um, are the reasons why that huge, that quite big increase. Happy to support the motion.
Thank you. Any further comments from the table?
Question.
Councillor Holster.
Looking at these, um, prices, we actually do an, an investigation into as to whether our staff could provide these services at a better rate than, uh, some of these look terrific. So I was just wondering, I, I remember in the past we'd had civil construction where it turned out that council could do the job considerably cheaper. I think we, you know, this needs to be investigated, you know, with all our, um, tenders in the future. Just to make sure that, you know, we are getting the best price and whether we could actually do it better or not.
Thank you, through to the chain.
Yes, through you there. We've certainly done the exercise on some isolated, um, clean, uh, areas, I guess. And we've always found that that's an area that we find difficult to compete with. It's just, yeah, the rates and that the council are that, we just haven't got to compete with the, uh, the contract planners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment, questions? Councillor Murphy to close.
Consider closed, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously, thank you. Five point three, uh, this is the capital budget adjustments section. Uh, the recommendation is there, all the information has been given out to the councils. Evolved for councillor Murphy, please.
So move.
Councillor Murphy, other secondary? Councillor Martin, thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Um, I think the report's pretty clear for most with respect to what this is actually looking to achieve. So, um, and, and there's some significant detail there. Um, having read the report and sort of studied in some detail, there's nothing out there that sort of jumps out as that I'd be too concerned about. Commend the report for endorsement.
Thank you. Councillor Martin.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. I can agree with councillor Murphy's thoughts there. These are required adjustments and, uh, puts the projects back on a, uh, a good footing, uh, for completion. And I think it's a necessary adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment or questions? Councillor Murphy to close.
Considered closed, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against?
Carrie unanimously, thank you.
Five point four, future of local government final report.
So move.
Do we believe it? Yes, thank you councillor Murphy.
Second.
Uh, councillor Ennis, thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, ma'am. I think the Devonport City Council has been our leader throughout the state with respect to providing submissions to local government and view board. Um, the response that we have now for the final report is an excellent one. Um, and I must commend the general manager for the continual engagement of us as council, but also seeking review from, um, his executive team. And I think it demonstrates the, um, the level of maturity that this organisation has within the local government sector. Um, it's disappointing that state government at the time, which is now in caretaker mode, made the decision that did with respect to, um, not proceeding and, um, I think the political, the, um, political judgment of, uh, excluding forced amelomations. Um, I still believe in reform, um, and I strongly believe that the Tasmanian community is ready for what has been suggested by, um, this particular council. So, um, there's really not too much more to add. I don't think we'll see too much with respect to, um, you know, to quote, um, former councillor Leon Perry, kicking the can down the road. Uh, was the catchphrase that he used on a continual basis for simple black bean, that's what happened. Can't leave the vampire in charge of blood bank. So, um, and hopefully that, uh, this submission and, and hopefully others will see that the Tasmanian community is ready for reform.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis.
Thank you. I'd like to, uh, commend the, uh, general manager and the team who put this, uh, recommendation together. Um, it's shown that we have stuck strongly to our position and, uh, and reaffirmed even though there's probably going to be no change as we, as we realise. But I think, uh, you know, at least we have been strong in our opinion. We have, uh, spent a lot of time thinking about this and coming up with where we're at. And so I think, uh, for us to, to, uh, give this final, uh, report, uh, you, which should be what, our fourth or fifth report? Um, it's just, uh, shows that we've taken this seriously and considered the options and, um, are going with those recommendations. So, uh, well done.
Thank you. Any further comments from the table? Councillor Shane?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, yes, no, I can agree with the previous speakers. Um, the only thing I'd like to add is, um, I think the future of local government on the North West coast is, is pretty strong. Um, there's a lot, been a lot of leadership in this area from councillors that have been here a lot longer than me on the other side of the table here. Um, and from the mayor and the general manager. Um, I've seen discussions with councils, uh, other side of us, and they've been quite positive. And, um, there's certainly unanimous voice to, um, engage in strategic planning. So while a lot of work's gone into the local government report, I think, um, Devonport and the greater region, um, will just go from strength to strength from the county. So we're in a good spot. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Um, I would just say that it's been eighteen months of, uh, long haul. And the hours that has been put into this, not only this council table, previous council table, uh, our general manager and the team. The amount of hours put into this, we've got the full fatigue, to be honest. And, um, I believe when I say it's our final report, but anyway, um, congratulations to everybody that's been involved in this, all the work that everyone's put in, every meeting that you've been to, all the online consultation, everything that we've done. Um, yes, we've certainly led some of the front right from the beginning and said, this is how it should be. And we still stick to that. And that's the way it should be. how it should be and we still stick to that and that's the way it should be. So I thank everybody that has, uh, been involved and I believe because we led from the beginning, we're still leading now and, uh, watch this close. Council Murphy to close.
Uh, thank you, ma'am, and thank you for the council's consideration.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously. Thank you. Uh, five point five is extending hydrocoast waste management group and emission. The recommendations there, if I can move it, please.
So moved.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Other second to?
Second.
Council Hollister, thank you. Council Murphy.
Well, I can't make a previous statement in the last motion for resolution council, ma'am, if we don't include the West Coast and King Island councils within our region to join the, the double C W N G. So, you know, again, it just highlights, um, how well-run that organisation is. Um, private coast waste management group has done a fantastic job as well as have built in it. It also highlights the changes with respect to the introduction of FOGO and the Tasmanian Waste Linking. Um, it does position the organisation in a position where, uh, it can be, um, a little bit more robust with respect to, um, potential hostile state government takeovers because it is seen as a bit of a cash cow. Um, but I think, um, full credit to the organisation with, um, you know, looking to achieve that sixty percent waste reduction target. I think it's, um, something that we've all signed on to. And again, I think including our, our sort of, our good, uh, West Coasters and our King Island neighbours who sometimes regard themselves as King Islanders and this is Tasmania, but we need to include them as part of our region. So, um, yeah, again, I commend it for council's endorsement.
Thank you. Council Hollister?
Yes, I support the recommendation. Um, I think we need to be careful in the future that this organisation doesn't get combined with other similar organisations around the state and we wind up with another task order. So I support the motion.
Thank you. Any further comments from the table? Council Shane?
Um, very happy with the direction that's heading in. It's regional, so that's a big tick. Um, I hope that the discussions regarding the financial contribution to the group by the two new councils is managed carefully. Um, I have no reason to doubt that it won't be, but I, I guess you just want to make sure that all that sort of, um, is checked and cross-checked. Um, yeah, it's a great initiative.
Thank you. Further comment? Um, I mean, I hate to name you. I hate waste. I hate rubbish. I can't wait to see us as the nine councillors now, um, try to get all our white players and everybody that lives in this wonderful place that we call home to start to really think twice about what they purchase bringing to their home because what comes in generally, most of it has to go back out again. And as I said, I'll be a broken record about this. When I started on council twelve years ago, it was one mountain of landfill in Goulton. It's now twelve mountains of landfill. So we've got to get people to start to really think twice about what they're doing every time they purchase something to bring into the home. So if we can do this as a group like we can, I think it's a good idea. So it's great to have the West Coast and King Island included in this group, if that makes sense. Council Murphy to close, please.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, we're moving on to item six, this information. Six point one is workshops and briefing sessions held. If I can have a move of the report, please.
Second.
Council Shane, a second?
Um, sorry.
Sorry. Council Moore, I mean, Council Shane. Thank you. Council Moore?
Uh, thank you, ma'am. It's a procedural motion, uh, everything's incorporated in there and needs to be explained. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Shane?
Thank you, ma'am. In relation to, um, the discussion on the median density and developments, I really enjoyed that, um, discussion with fellow councillors. Um, but I'd just like to reiterate my comments from, from that workshop in that, um, while duplex developments might suit, um, local builders, um, we should also be looking, um, at developers that will go for multi-story apartment dwellings. The reason for that is, um, our land is finite and I see part of our charter at the moment is to set up, um, housing solutions for the next generation and we need to be very, very careful to develop, um, the land that we have, um, so that the next generation have affordable housing. Finally, I just note, um, back in the seventies and eighties, we had multi-story, um, apartments in Killer Street, Victoria Parade and Percy Street. It seemed to be a thing that builders could easily do. I'm, I'm still, um, curious as to why that's not so easy now.
Building to go change.
Look forward to developing it, um, developing those discussions more.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further comment? Council Murphy?
Uh, thank you, ma'am. I, I, I highly, I thoroughly enjoyed that conversation with respect to, and I, I, I think it leads to, as, uh, councillor Shane has mentioned, um, it leads to a broader conversation. Um, but more importantly, again, it highlights the deficiencies within the state government or does, you know, uh, and the deficiencies we have within Lupa as well as the Tasmanian Planning Commission with respect to, um, not being able to get the best bang for our buck out of the land that we do have available, uh, because of the restrictive nature of, of our planning scheme.
Thank you. Council Barney to choose one?
Uh, I'd like to follow up from what councillor Murphy said. Yeah, um, I think it's great that council have got, uh, developing this, um, vision and strategy for our median density housing. I think it's, um, just shows the foresight of council with the starting process. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council, uh, any further comments, sorry? Council Man to close.
Thank you, ma'am. And, uh, yes, I can agree with the previous speakers in regards to that, that workshop and certainly, uh, housing shortages that, uh, the whole state is experiencing and that's not going to go away by looking at these options that we have done through the workshops. Certainly, uh, hopefully places us in a good position moving forward for the next ten, twenty years. Thank you. Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Thank you. Carrie unanimously. So, yeah. Six point two is the monthly report. I can have a move of the place.
So moved.
Council Moore, a second to?
Second.
Council Shane, thank you. Council Moore?
Uh, yeah, as normal, ma'am, it looks like you have been very busy. I might have a, I will ask a question.
Absolutely.
I'm just wondering about the meeting with Dave Gough and Jennifer Houston about Te Agar.
Yeah, we're starting to consider what can be done up there. Um, now that they've, um, they're now open on Mondays and Tuesdays currently. They're hoping, they're aiming to be open, obviously, more, um, and it's a start, which is great. Um, and now that they've got, um, that game, I've had a couple of meetings with them now. So we're certainly looking into whether there can be something developed up there, working with six rivers, working with Te Agar as well, let alone the fact that Luff is one of the most beautiful, natural, incredible places. And, um, I don't think we make the most of it. At the moment, people will drive up to three different car parks and live at the lighthouse. Uh, that's about it at the moment, which is, um, other than the beautiful view. Uh, so we're just trying to work with them to see if they're willing to work with us, which we've got to that point, which is great. And now, um, as soon as we've got, uh, information in an email, it'll probably become to a workshop at some stage, um, and probably the budget deliberations perhaps the next step as well. Thank you. Any further questions? No, sorry. Council Shane to?
Say something?
Sure. Thank you.
Um, ma'am, there was a lovely photo of you in the paper this week, uh, cradling a bottle of champagne. Um, would you mind talking us through, um, the events that led up to that photo, please?
That's just my apologies.
Yes, sorry. I was, I just couldn't resist, so.
I tried that once, you're going through.
I was just saying, would you mind if I asked you a monthly report? I'll be in the monthly report next. All right. Well, maybe could I ask a different question?
Sure.
Um, I notice you've also met with the report, um, Minister Barnett about the East Newport Medical Centre. Could you please talk us through the status of that?
Uh, yes, I'll be aiming for that to be opened by the first of April, which is very exciting. Um, Dr Bay has been working with the current minister Barnett, um, you know, we're in pay mode at the moment, um, but there's still a lot of work that's going on where they're working together to get it renovated, to get it painted and recarved it. Uh, he has two doctors to start with, straight away ready to go for the first of April. Uh, I think they get the keys on the first of March, which is very soon. And as soon as everything's done, I can open the doors on the first of April, which is amazing. And we've got more doctors willing to be there. I would want to say I think we'll end up with about six doctors there, which will be just amazing. Yeah, very exciting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, any further comments from the table? Council Evans?
Thank you. Um, I noticed, uh, you attended, uh, Una Rocklip's, uh, ninetieth birthday, which is absolutely fantastic.
She's a legend.
She is. Uh, the Rocklip, uh, family in this community is, uh, was, were very worthy of, uh, celebration and particularly to make ninety years is a fantastic amp for to see, uh, Una in such, uh, high spirits is fantastic and, uh, let's hope that, uh, she keeps going well on, well on beyond ninety. So, uh, I, uh, I think it's just worthy that we, uh, we know just too.
Yes, blames. She's iconic and, um, I'm so pleased that she's one of our diamonds now. Diamonds of Davenport and she's so proud of everything all the time and, uh, it was one of the most lovely things. And to see, I said, I will just say, I got to sit with Una and she was going, oh, you know, I don't want it to be all about me. I wasn't going to have a birthday party. And I said to her, look at every single one of those people out there, they're only here because of you. And she hadn't thought about it like that. So it was really nice for her to stop being so humble for a minute and go, hey, I did quite a good thing, didn't I? So let alone what they've done with the tuna and the Peter and Ian Seaford, uh, legacy. And Peter was so proud too, so it was really lovely to see. Thank you for answering that.
And secondly, it was great to see you up dancing at, uh, the, uh, Spender by the Mersey. That was really wonderful there.
Oh, it was wonderful, wasn't it? Well done to Debbie. It was just a really lovely event to have down in that wonderful waterfront park. So very awesome. Thank you. Any further comments? Uh, we'll have council Moore to close there, please.
Consider it closed, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously. Thank you. Six point three is the general manager's report. If I can have a move of the place?
So moved.
Council Barney and Council Shane, thank you. Council Barney?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, general managers had a busy month as well. It was great to read, uh, last week in the paper that, um, bipartisan, um, support and agreement with the funding for the, um, the new basketball high court stadium. Um, I think that's in no small part to how organised council are. I noticed you had a meeting with Shane Broad regarding our priorities and ensuring that simplis is high on the list. Um, and I think it, it just goes to show how organised we are here at council, that we've got our, our term plan, um, we've got this amazing work that's been done, the sports infrastructure, uh, master plan. And when there's an election on and people want to, um, put money towards worthwhile projects, I think that speaks volumes when you've got both sides of the, of the aisle coming and wanting to do an announcement to support it on the same day. I thought that was handled very well.
Thank you. Council Shane?
Thank you, ma'am. I actually had two quick questions to you, the general manager.
Please.
Um, item two point one, um, the meeting with, um, Meacrop Care to discuss future expansion plans with their site. Um, just wondering if you could talk to that a little bit and also, um, item two, fire
Take away. Get a minute, us?
Through you, ma'am. So we've, um, we've had many a number of times with representatives of Meacrop, uh, considering options around, uh, like how to expand on that current site. Part of that includes potentially some car parking that the council have been on the northern side of the property. Um, at this stage, I still have a few concepts and once they've put those up, then they will come back to the council workshop and, uh, through the council.
So just.
Still a way to go. Um, really discussions around what's possible and what they might add or should.
So you're sort of limited to parking at the station, not extra beds?
No, I, uh, we're okay in some of the parking, we're allowed them to put in extra beds. That's our intention. And with, um, the regional fire chief, we just met with, uh, their shame back for, uh, went through a, a report that they've done, looking at a number of sites in the city, uh, which basically ruled those sites out and so we're just looking for, uh, options and ideas around, um, the other thoughts we might have about some other potential sites. We're adding to, um, a data file line that he thought that could be, uh, be a possibility and there, and, uh, when I invite, uh, uh.
Thank you. Yeah, through you, ma'am. I, I hope they understand that we greatly value, um, the work that the fires drew. Um, it's just that we'd like them to have a better place, um, maybe even expansion. So it'd be really good if we can keep them in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Council Evans?
Thank you. Um, fantastic that, uh, you've managed to reach an in principle agreement with Tazro, um, something that's been, uh, s- sort of sadly lacking at this stage, that pathway going right through there and hopefully over, uh, because I see lots of visitors coming and they get down to the fence and they go, hmm, what happens here? And they can't sort of say they're looking over the fence, uh, it'll be great when the pathway is through there. So well done on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? No? So we can have council Barney to close, please.
Consider it closed. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously. Thank you very much. So six point four is the monthly operational report, uh, recommendation, say? If I can have a move of the place?
So moved.
Council Hollister?
Council Hollister.
Council Shane? Thank you, Council Hollister.
Questions? Wrong into the plans. Um, the Kerison's Corner, at the north side of the corner of Elizabeth Street and Formby Road, where there's been proposed service stations. Um, I think there was issues with the Tasmanian, Indian Commission, I believe they're now finished, hopefully. Have they got a go here or is it still?
Yes, lots of them. Yeah, through you, ma'am. So to answer that question, the, the first one that council, uh, endorsed was along Formby Road, on the corner of Elizabeth Street and Formby Road. Um, that's just in the hands of the developers as to when they choose to progress that development. The second one's noted in, uh, item one point one in the monthly report. Um, so the rezoning for Kerison's Corner has now come through from, or came through in January, um, to, um, rezone that, um, from general residential to commercial and to also, um, approve the, um, development for the service station on that corner. Um, the only difference that the planning commission made from what was endorsed by council was to, um, increase the operating hours from seven AM to ten PM each day. Um, and, oh, well, sorry, council endorsed from seven AM to ten PM. The planning commission endorsed it to twenty-four seven, but they have restricted the, uh, car wash and the drive-through back to the hours that council endorsed. So basically the shop can stay open during the night, um, and fuel sales, um, but the other activities, which is primarily what council had concerns about, was the operation of the car wash and the, and the drive-through, will not be allowed to operate during the night.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Shane, just a second. That's what I. Is there anyone?
I've just got a quick one. Is there an appetite to increase the historical data on council's dashboard? I notice the approval goes back to about 2006. I'm just sort of interested in trends, that's all. Trying to sort of check the economic health of the city.
There's nothing you can try at this point in time. You might say that on notice.
I do something for graduates or something. Thank you.
So further questions? Councillor Murphy, your first one.
No question, Mayor. It's just worth noting in the report that, or Miss Luntz may be able to provide a little bit more advice. The TPC's approval of subdivision at 246 Brook Street and the length of time that it took is probably something that I sort of might have mentioned a little bit earlier with respect to the inefficiencies within that particular framework. How long has that been ongoing for, Miss Luntz?
Through you, Mayor. Just a clarification from Councillor Murphy. So you're asking the question how long the rezoning took from Brook Street? I might have to take that on notice to know the exact months that that took, but I do know that
Approximately.
It was significantly quicker than a number of other rezoning applications because there wasn't any delays for further assessments for reports. So the example that we've got at the moment is the Denfield site that's being re-advertised by the planning commission. We've got a notification of that today. That would have, that process started prior to Brook Street and still no closer to a decision. So Brook Street went through remarkably quickly in comparison to others.
Couple of years.
Even that's when it came to us. So we may not have heard of the planning commission.
And it's also noteworthy in our report as well, the statistics have always got some fair amount of tension around our parking made out of renew. People must be using it. There are a lot more public transport. They're walking a lot more. This would be used for some of our, I noticed the multi-story car parks, 2% of our budget in positive theme. But normally that's been a fairly strong performer in previous reports. So that's good. Good 16% there.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Councillor Barney?
Oh, that's all.
You're right.
Yeah, I just noticed in our annual plan actions, there's mention of the feasibility study in future directions at High End Hill. Says the report's been finalized. When will we be presented with that in the workshop?
Mr Scutie, thank you.
Through you, Mayor. The business case analysis is complete. We have still been discussing the scope of that with National Trust or a partner in the operation of that site. And there is an interaction between our other partnership agreement with National Trust and support we currently provide and the resources they have operational. But there's certainly that the report from council officers perspective is ready to be discussed with with council in a workshop format and the appropriate time to give you some further background in terms of the scope of that report and other options that the council has considered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Moore?
Yeah, I just had a question about 5.1, just about all the, there's a lot of new hires there, which is probably good to see. But 16 hires and only four out of those departments. I just wondered if you could give some detail about that? I was just gonna, it's 5.1. 56. Yeah, 56. Thank you.
I was last, yeah, through you, Mayor, you're referring to the graph that relates to the
New hires?
The new hires for council. So the graph can be slightly misleading because it's reporting for the financial year. We had a number of staff members that left in May and June of last financial year and then the recruitment process. And they started in July. So they hit the graph as a new hire, but the person they were replacing left the organisation last financial year. So we haven't increased overall staff numbers that year.
Right. That's what the question was around. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. Any further questions? Councillor Hollister.
Any further development with the moving of the show, I don't know.
So, yeah.
Do you like that feel, ladies? Yeah, totally. We've actually asked through our retail survey, it was done last year, that I did with John Lexu. So Chamber and I met the other day and we decided to actually put some questions out to the retailers now that we've gained a lot of email, so that we can actually contact them very easily and put it to them to see if we could gather data and bring that back to council. So to see how people are bearing, because we looked at it four years ago, five years ago, and put it out to the public and the public was down and they said, believe it as is, that was fine. But it's now five years, four years on, so we decided to relook at it. So we're going to get the data, bring it back to council, and then council will make a decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Councillor Ennis?
Yes, I assume we'll come out public as well on the, since we've talked about that.
Yeah, once we get the data.
It'll be important.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councillor Martin?
Thank you. Just to concur with Councillor Ennis in regards to the importance of actually including the public, even though you get data from the business sector, the public sector is much larger and should have a say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? I'll just point out that our Australian Day event was amazing. Wow, what an amazing array of nominations we had with three Citizen of the Year, Young Citizen of the Year and the Event of the Year. We certainly can't complain that we don't have enough to choose from. It was a wonderful event. And also, of course, our wonderful Australian citizens on the day. And just a big shout out to everybody that was involved. It was just a wonderful event. I'd always be very happy that we can have events like that and even the Premier can have. So we can't knock that, can we? That means that he actually thought it was one of the nicest ceremonies he's ever been to. So that was lovely. So congratulations to everybody involved. I will ask Councillor Hollister to close. Thank you.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously. Thank you. 6.5 is the unconfirmed minutes for the audit panel. If I could have a move of it. Thank you, Councillor Ennis. And a second, please.
Second.
Councillor Hollister, thank you. Councillor Murphy.
It's all in the report for everyone. Same here.
Thank you. Councillor Hollister.
I think there's ordered committee with an independent flag on the committee as well as councillors and staff. I think it's very comforting for the community and I fully support the recommendations and the operation of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Councillor Murphy, to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously. Thank you. I'm going to send this to move into the fire session if I can ever move it. Councillor Murphy and Councillor Barney. Councillor Murphy?
You need to say for me.
Councillor Barney?
Nothing to add. Thank you, Mayor.
Any further comments or questions?
Consider it closed.
Thank you, Councillor Murphy. All those in favour?
Aye.
So Carrie unanimously. Thank you. So we'll close. Thank you for those members of the public, some have already left or would, but thank you for attending and we will be moving into fire session very shortly. Thank you.